Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and Pledge of Allegiance.
This morning, we asked that we remember those in our community locally and globally that are less fortunate than we are. I remember all those who lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. And also, we ask that we just remember the emotional health of our community. We have tragedies and we have both sides to a story that tells the whole story. And so, we just ask that we remember those that have lost their lives in any way, shape or form. Also, finally, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes from the council meeting of October 16th, 2019, and bills for payment on November 1st and 8th, 2019. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky.
I'd like to welcome our mayor here this morning to present us with the proposed city budget. Welcome, Mayor. Mr. Lichtenwalter.
Thank you. Happy to be here. Thanks a lot for having us. And you can have a call. I could email you a copy of this speech if you want afterwards, or give you a hard copy, whatever you prefer. But as you know, our consultant, PFM, has detailed that the city of Erie has three very serious budget problems. The three issues that face us are first, our pension problem, second, our debt problem, and third, the structural deficit. What that means is the growth of our recurring expenditures has greatly exceeded every year for a long time, the growth of our annual revenue. This three-headed dragon, as PFM calls it, is a result of decades of making short-term decisions and pushing the three large budget issues off into the future. This delay in addressing the city's budget issues has compounded our future deficit every year. Today, we present a 2020 budget, and I will explain how we are taking on and correcting each of these issues first. So first, let's talk about the pension problem, which is our most pressing problem. The amount the city will be contributing to employee pensions has doubled in six years, from about $9.9 million in 2014 up to $18.8 million. We cannot permit this to continue. The reason the city's contribution to pensions are rising so fast is that two of our pension assumptions are very outdated. First, we have been using the mortality table from 1983, which is over 30 years old. Second, we've been assuming a rate of return of 8% on the pension when the actual average annual rate of return is closer to 7%. Based on PFM's recommendations and extensive analysis we've done, including advice we've gotten from Don Betker, we are making the following changes to pension assumptions. First, we'll begin using the most recent mortality table, which is from 2014. And second, we'll reduce the rate of return assumption to 7.25%. In the short term, this will cost us more money, but over the next 20 years, it will save the city over $11 million. The second major issue is our debt problem. The way our debt is structured now, the payment will increase $1 million in 2021 and an additional $3.5 million in 2022. Our debt payment will rise from $3.7 million in 2020 to $8.1 million in 2022. The way to eliminate this problem is to pay down the debt, but how are we going to do that? The Water Authority has offered to prepay their annual lease payments, which goes through the year 2050. That could generate $60 to $90 million. These funds could be used to pay down the debt and significantly reduce our annual debt payments going forward. PFM has recommended that we get an appraisal of the Water Authority to determine its value before we do anything. We hope that we will have this within about a month. We will then need to make a decision based on that value and how much paying down our debt would reduce our annual debt payments. This may even lead to changes in the 2020 budget, possibly. We'll talk more about that later. Finally, the structural deficit is our third problem. That's where our expenses are increasing much faster than our revenues are. The changes we are making to the pension assumptions and the prepayment of debt will go a long way to reducing this structural deficit. If done successfully, the dramatic increase in the city pension costs and debt payment will be eliminated. The only rising cost we would have left to address is employee expenses. We've already made progress on slowing the increase of employee expenses. In our negotiation with Erie Fighter Fighters Union this year, they have agreed to the following salary increase schedule for the next four years. They will receive a 0% salary increase in 2020, 1% in 2021, 1.5% in 2022, and 2% in 2023. We're going to follow the same salary increase schedule for non-union employees over the next four years. We are hoping to negotiate a very similar schedule of salary increases with police, AFSMI, and Teamsters in negotiations over the next three years. Those are the major changes we're proposing to fix the city's budget and make it manageable without major tax increases in the years ahead, thanks to PFM and their guidance and direction on the budget. Next, I'd like to explain five other significant changes that make the 2020 general fund budget balance. First, we're going to do a tax lien sale. That will generate about $1.8 million in revenue. Second, we're sending delinquent parking tickets for collection. Conservatively, this should generate about $300,000 in additional revenue in 2020. And that is in the budget you have, as well as the tax lien sale is in there. Third, income tax rates will not go up for people who live and work in the city. So if you live and work in the city, your income tax remains at 1.65%. However, people who work in the city but live outside the city will have their special levy income tax increased from 0.8% to 0.5%. So someone earning $40,000 per year who works in the city but lives outside the city, gets paid every two weeks, their pay will be about $4.92 more income tax to the city in each pay. This seems fair because they do use city streets, sidewalks, and other services, and if they have a problem or an accident, the city of Erie Police and firefighters respond. Fourth, there is a slight property tax increase of $75 in the 2020 budget. This means that if you own a home worth $100,000, your 2020 city property tax will go up $75. It's been five years since the last property tax increase in the city. That $75 increase is only a 6% increase over the rate that was set in 2015. Fifth, there's also an increase in sewer and refuse fees that city residents will pay. It is best that we increase fees incrementally every year rather than wait several years and do huge increases. The sewer fee will increase on average from about $70 per quarter to $76.55 per quarter. Remember, council decided not to increase the refuse fee last year, so that fee is going up a little bit more. It will be going up from $55 per quarter to $65.26 per quarter. This increase will allow us to transfer $1.1 million from sewer and $1.25 million from refuse into the general fund. And that will compensate the city for our risks and expenses in running plant operations. In the future, residents should expect minimal increases every year in these two fees. Also, when you compare our 2019 sewer and refuse fee with the 2019 fees charged by Fairview, Gerard, Harbor Creek, Wesleyville, Mill Creek Northeast, and Lawrence Park, the city's fees were the lowest of the eight. Finally, I continue to be open, honest, transparent, and accessible to you and to the Erie community. Last year, we implemented a budget procedure that is highly recommended by financial professionals. Again, this year, on the last four pages of your budget packet, you'll see a five-year budget forecast. Planning for the long-term implications of this year's budget decisions is really important to successful planning. I'm very pleased that the results presented in the five-year forecast, if you compare the five-page, the last year's five-page budget forecast, you'll see significant improvement every year going forward. For instance, the 2024 budget forecast deficit is less than half this year what it was last year. It's been reduced from $22.6 million deficit to just under $10.4 million deficit. Obviously, there's still work to do, but we are making significant progress. Remember, these projected deficits assume we do nothing to increase income or control expenses over these five years. We will obviously make changes, and if we can grow Erie's population and create that abundance of family-sustaining jobs, the actual future results will be much different. The next page in that five-year projection shows what's going to happen with the sewer budget. The second line from the bottom shows the worst-case estimate of what the sewers will be each year for the next five years. The next page is the five-year projection of the refuse budget, and the second line from the bottom of that page shows the worst-case estimate for refuge fees over the next five years. Finally, the last page shows you our expected expenditures for debt service. If we are successful paying down the debt, this will be significantly changed from what you see there. In conclusion, I'd like to say three things. First, I'm very proud of this budget. I look forward to talking to you about it in the weeks to come. I'm glad we've got this to you two weeks earlier than last year, and as always, I value your input over the weeks ahead. I look forward to great conversations. Second, I highly value the work that PFM has done for us over the last several months. They are still finalizing their final report. We are trying hard to implement everything they recommend as quickly as possible. Finally, my team and I continue to build opportunity, restore hope, and transform Erie. The numbers you see today do not show the financial impact of an Erie where racism and prejudice no longer exist, and every person is valued for the unique skills and talents that everyone possesses. Every neighborhood is welcoming and vibrant. Our revitalized and developed downtown and bayfront are closely connected. Every person has the education they need to be successful, and our great family-sustaining jobs drop people into Erie region and increase our population by tens of thousands. This is a vision. It is our dream, but my team and I will not stop working till we achieve it. We'll be talking about this for many hours in the coming weeks. I certainly welcome any questions you may have today on it.
Mr. President, I have a couple of questions. Under the pension recommendations from PFM, there were two other things that I don't think I heard you mention. One was pursue a more affordable level of pension benefits for new hires, which I realize some of that has to do with, you know, contract negotiations, but what about those who are not union employees? The second one is revisit the 457 deferred compensation plan. PFM pointed out that the city of Erie is one of the few places where you not only get a pension, but you get a 401K-like benefit. So what is happening with those two things? My next question is, and I asked this when we met with the mayor on Monday, I asked about the golf course, and I was told that that's not a high priority, that that, that they had to prioritize what they were going to do. However, on page 28 of the PFM report, golf course, focus on fixing the deficit first, it recommends that a consultant be brought in to figure out how to make sure that the golf course is not losing money. I made this, the reason I'm bringing this up, the PFM report says that this is a small blip in the budget, but one of the things PFM stressed was that we need to lead by example. So I don't understand why you can't at least look at that for 2020. And my third question is, and when I mentioned this on Monday at the meeting, everybody looked at me like I was, you know, where was I coming from? And I went back and I reviewed my notes from the PFM consultation meetings where they specifically agreed with me that there should be a tracking system for LURDA. And I've seen nobody come forward yet from the administration to say that they are going to be tracking. Now, we have a 10-year LURDA in place, so, you know, you're tracking who's getting LURDA, but who is tracking what is happening when properties are coming off LURDA that have already been on LURDA to find out whether they are appealing their assessments so that they're paying less than they, than originally they were agreed to. So this wasn't, I had suggested this, but PFM also recommended that. So I was really disappointed that I saw a lot of blank faces when I looked around the table and I talked about LURDA again, went back to my PFM notes, and there it was. They said they agree that there needs to be a tracking mechanism. So let's review. What's happening with the idea of more affordable level of pension benefits for new hires and revisiting the 457 deferred compensation plan? What's going to happen with the recommendation about the golf course, bringing in a consultant to focus on fixing that deficit? And third, how is LURDA going to be tracked? I'm talking about the existing LURDA. I'm also talking about the properties that are being bought right now at higher than their assessed value to make sure that they are at least paying what, because they have a 10-year tax break, but are they going to be paying what the actual, the existing taxes are? So that's a lot to absorb, but those are my questions that I'm going to start the budget process with. You don't have to answer them today, but I expect answers.
No, I'd be happy to give you an answer right now. The Affordable Pension and the 457 will help. We are talking about that. We're in conversation, but since, you know, the firefighters have agreed not to take a pay raise, and the 3% annual pay raise is a huge impact on the budget. And the fact that we've got one union to agree to that, and I have committed that in this year's budget, I have not put in any salary increase for non-union employees that work for the city and management employees. And I know people aren't happy about that, but I believe it's the right thing to do because I believe we have to lead by example. And since we're going to be asking the other unions to do something similar in future negotiations over the next three years, I felt important that we, that we lead by example. So I was hesitant. We are talking about both of those things, both stopping the input into the 457 that the city does, people, as well as doing things to make the pension plans more affordable, which will be part of negotiations with unions as well. But those two changes aren't going to make a huge impact, and the fact that we're asking for, you know, that 0% salary increase, I thought, I just felt it may be too much to ask. But if you want to put something like that in, you certainly can. With the golf course, PFM, you know, did not recommend that we sell the golf course, but that we evaluate it. And I think the golf course, and correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, but it's going to bring in about $100,000 this year. So it is profitable, and we've made changes to make that happen.
Can, that's a surprise, since the previous monthlies we got also showed it, you adjusted the budget halfway through the year. So I would like to see the numbers from the original estimate of what the budget was and what the projected revenues were, and how that has changed month by month. Can you do that for me, Paul?
That should be on, that's all we provide you. The monthly report shows you.
Right, and it was changed so that it doesn't look like that there was a deficit.
What changed? What are you saying changed?
That the actual, the number was changed in terms of what the projected revenues were. Halfway through, somebody changed the numbers, so it, it, don't shake your head, Paul. I keep track of this. So I want all those numbers, month by month. I want the original projections on what it was, so.
Okay, can you get those to me?
And if you actually made it money this year, you know that I've talked about this. Interesting that you didn't bring that up at any finance meetings and said, hey, guess what? We're making money. So I'd like to see all those numbers.
Okay.
But what about the consultant part of it?
What do you mean?
Where PFM says, the city should seek and retain the services of a consultant specializing in golf courses who can provide an independent evaluation of the course's potential to break even in this market, whether that is through continued city management or a private operator. A subsequent phase of EIP STMP funding could pay for this evaluation. So it's right here, page 29.
Yeah, I think we've already, you know, we're already making $100,000 this year. The projection for next year is positive as well, as you can see in the budget that you've got. So I don't feel the need for a consultant at this point.
Okay, so I just want to make it clear then that not all of the recommendations from PFM are being followed. That's all I'm saying, so.
Miss, may I speak?
Sure.
I, I just want to make it clear. PFM's recommendation is to use a consultant and pay for the consultant through Phase Two. You cannot engage in Phase Two until you complete Phase One. You don't have the report yet from PFM. The report will come out in December. You cannot engage in Phase Two, hiring the consultant, until next year. If you do it now, you pay the bill. If you do it next year, or halfway through, it'd probably be in next year if you do it, then you can get funding from the state. 90% of that consultant's fee would be paid for by the state. So if you do it now, it's not, it's not as PFM recommended, and you're footing the bill. So I think that might be premature, but once the report becomes official, then you're eligible to apply to the state for funding to pay for the consultant.
I'm glad that you mentioned that, but that's not what, nobody mentioned that the other day when we were in this meeting. What I was told was that this was not a priority. So just to be clear, that was a meeting that was not, it was a meeting behind closed doors, so I just want that to be clear. And then my final question then about LURDA, who's going to be tracking LURDA, and how's that going to be done? Because I've been bounced around. I was, Paul Lichtenwalter said that I should ask the Treasurer's Office. The Treasurer's Office said they don't do that, so.
The county, my understanding is the county has that information. We've contacted them. They are going to get it to us, but not immediately because they have other priorities. And they, they do.
There's that word again, priorities. Thank you.
Mayor and Paul, my question would be a little simpler, I believe, but that special levy that we are going to charge the people that work in the city but live outside, what's that going to generate revenue-wise? What is that number?
You'll notice in your budget book, have you had a chance to look at that?
Probably not, they just.
Okay.
Why don't you tell them?
There's actually an increase in the amount that the non-local residents are going to pay. So when you're going to take a look at that, that's going to go up in your budget book this year by about $7 million. And then the converse to that is, there's going to be less of an impact on my portion of my local tax, so that's going to go down a little bit. So this year, the net effect is going to be about $5 million, just a year south of $5 million, by doing that.
And I know last year was, that was one of my sticking points, that the citizens that live in the city were getting bit a little bit by raising their earned income tax, where I'm happy to hear in this budget that we can expand that to the non-residents paying some more to help our city. Thank you. Any other questions, Council?
Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, thank you and Paul and the administration for all your work with this budget and our part, working with us to, you know, have our opinion and perspective so far. The question I have is, not just last year, but several years before prior administrations, there's this lists of fees, fee increases, that are always talked about in relation to generating revenue. And I know they're much smaller than some of the things we're talking about, you know, the tax increase, the special levy tax adjustment for non-resident employees of the city, et cetera, et cetera. But some of those things, I think, could be infrastructural and long-term and grow. And I don't know that we've done, and I haven't got a chance, obviously, to digest and go through the, all the nuances. But are there any of those types of changes to, again, fees or services that we provide that historically have been free or less than surrounding municipalities? And then the second question is, in relation, well, I guess you don't have to answer this one now, but what is the likelihood of getting some of the same negotiating points with other unions? Now, I guess that's probably, can't, I guess, I can't really say that. It's probably a bad question in the public space, but I think that if we're projecting out, I guess a better question is, if we were to get what you hoped for, can you give us a number, or your administration give us a number of what that will look like as far as saving expenses for us? And not to do that now, but just in the future as we're moving forward, because I think it directly affects some of the decisions that we want to make. You know what I mean? I know you're talking about five years, 10 years, ultimate change for our community or city budget-wise and debt-wise over 20 years, which I think is the right conversation to have. But some of those nuances along the way, I would be interested in hearing those in the budget sessions, if not before.
Smaller fees, can you address that, Paul?
I mean, I can address that, Curtis. We're always looking at what fees we're charging people. And as you know, this year, Councilman Kowalski worked on the parking ticket fee, and we did adjust that. Some of the other fees in the past couple of years, Andy Zimmerman up in code enforcement has looked at the building permits. And, you know, we're always checking what we're charging people versus what other municipalities locally are charging, what the other third-class cities in the state are charging. And we adjust, you know, try to adjust those accordingly when needed or when we find those to be out of whack.
Was there any, excuse me, if I could, was there any conversation around, I guess specifically the amusement tax, that's always for me a big buzz, increasing that and generating some revenue from that perspective as well? And there may be other little things, but that in particular?
We did not, you know. I can say it never came up, but that's not something we set as our priority, I guess.
I think if I just, and this is, again, not being in the administration, but some things, I understand the concept of priority. This is, I totally get that. The priority is really much related to long range and doing the right things now for the long range. I think the amusement tax, though, and some of these other smaller things, don't take as much intensity. It just has to take us, maybe make a decision to do it. We just have to decide to do that. And it's probably a couple hundred thousand dollars at least that if we could, maybe went from three to five or something like that. And this is general numbers. I think that we could simultaneously, with the focus on priorities, and I'm not being facetious when I use the term, just using your language, focusing on priorities does do some things along the way, like fee enhancements, expanding those, like the amusement, I'm sorry, excuse me, like the amusement tax, for example, that we can do simultaneously. That kind of helps. So that's just something to consider. Not an over criticism, just as something to consider as we move forward, because this isn't, you know, set in stone yet.
Maybe the amusement tax brings in about a quarter of a million dollars a year, 250,000. We did make a lot of changes, obviously, that I went through in the presentation, and so that, you know, we didn't want to add one more, I guess, on top of everything else.
Well, I just think it's a different population of people that you touch. When you talk about the amusement tax, you talk about a lot of people outside of the city coming into the city to generate or to experience, and not that city residents don't, but I think it touches a lot of folks outside the city that come in for the entertainment component that is offered here with the games and the sports teams and the plays and the, you know, many of the events at the convention center, et cetera, et cetera. So just, again, we're about to belabor it now, but just, I'm still wanting, it'd be interesting to see what that would look like as we're moving forward in negotiations.
I have one last question, I think. Is the money in here that the Regional Chamber had requested, $50,000?
We actually, I think they've agreed to $25,000. So, and that is in there. So it's not $50,000, but $25,000 for the.
Additional, or what, don't we already pay a membership?
We pay them $25,000. They asked us for an additional 50. We felt we couldn't do that, went back to them and said we could do 25, and they were happy with that.
And what's the rationale for us doing $25,000 for them to hire more people?
Well, what they're going to do is bring more jobs into Erie.
Uh huh.
That's what.
Yeah, and where do I find that in the budget? Where do I find that additional $25,000 for the Erie Regional Chamber? Do you know what line item it would be under?
It's a detail, so. If you go to page 57 in General Government, in the first grouping, it's the second to the last line item.
Seems like it, doesn't it?
And where's the justification for this?
We believe.
I mean, are we having a white paper or something from them? I'm not voting for this, I just want to let you know, because of some of the advocacy efforts that the Regional Chamber has undertaken in terms of opposing the Community College. They wanted to go with the Regional Community College. I think this is a dangerous precedent for us to be supporting an organization that sometimes works directly against the interest of the greater number of people in the city. So unless I see something that convinces me that, you know, what they're going to do with this, so. I just want to let the public know that the Chamber's looking for more money.
Any other questions, Council?
I'd like to say that it's a two-way street with this budget. The Council has been very proactive in the last couple of years, and I know we're going to be very proactive this year. And the fees to Council are not a little thing. So I would stress to the administration that we're looking at all fees. As you drive around the Commonwealth or you drive around the county and you check what different communities have done. In the past, Erie has been accused of being anti-business. Yet I just come back from In the past, Erie has been accused of being anti-business, yet they just come back from Elentown, and they have a business fee, so has many of the fees out in the east. We never instituted one, and so when we propose things like easement fees, I think those are easy things to do. And we should start looking at them, because Erie is evolving into a different kind of downtown. And it's not being anti-business or mean, you know, nobody has a problem when other communities charge fees when Erie people go out there, but we're always a little hesitant. And quite frankly, the city has to stop giving things away. We have to look at the impact on the people that live and work here. As I was looking through this book, I noticed that one key figure, the assessed value of the city hasn't varied much in a long time, and the number of properties has gone down. Doesn't take a mathematician to figure out what that problem is. That means that less people are going to have to assume the budget. We're not growing. No matter what anybody says, we're growing what they would call in accounting insignificant. It's not enough of an increase to make a difference if you compare us to Summit, or Milk Creek, or other communities that are, or even Elentown, who's expanding. Most of the cities in our class across the Commonwealth are stagnant, so we have to continue to work with Harrisburg to change those things. So when we look at fees, fees such as the entertainment fee and all that, that's the only thing we have to offer. You know, this is, this is a community that has all of the things that make this area great, yet we don't get the benefit from it. So we have to look at fees. It's why council looked at the parking fees. And I tell you, there's a third fee coming, and it's going to be discussed heavily during the finance meetings and the budget meetings. As Finance Chair, I took upon myself to ask the auditors to look at the way we do certain fees around here, and I'm not happy with it. And that's going to be a strong suggestion that we put something in place in how we monitor things and how we assess fees, because, you know, just having a fee is one thing, but not doing it properly is a whole nother. I'm not going to release that today, but that's going to be given as a courtesy to the administration first, and then I will release it after, while council gets told and administration. I plan on, you know, releasing the results of what I learned from the auditors about different things. And I would suggest to the administration that we've been lax in the past, we need to put someone in the administration to approach the nonprofits, which are, even though in here they look like they've gone down a little bit, a lot of that could be people coming off the LURDAs in the past. So I'd be really curious about how much of the tax exempts are a permanent tax exempt. That's a number I plan on looking at in the future, to see what that figure is. But we need to go after them and say, you know, we need more than just Vincent and Hammond, stick, you know, doing the majority of the 50% LURDA. We need to start going after people a little aggressively, not strong-armed, but we need, we need to have more pilots in place. All these things that we're doing, the pension, just for a fact, the pension board itself has recommended these for 20 years, but no administration ever wanted to touch that, and so I'll give you credit. This council and this administration took the political courage, and it is political courage when you have to raise taxes, to do the right thing. But that came out of, you know, the pension board itself realized the problems years ago too. So we have to, going forward, we have to be cognizant that some things are going to cause pain, and to do the right thing sometimes, but I agree with some of the steps we're doing, and just that, remember, it's a two-way street and everybody needs to be involved in this. And the citizens need to know why we're doing the things we do. But looking forward, it's going to be, I tell you, it's going to be a very interesting budget meeting, and we're going to air a lot of things out there, but I think we have to start doing a lot of things we've been talking about, like Councilman Jones has said. We've been talking about some of these things for five, six, seven years, you know, it's time we start putting them up there, picking the low fruit, working on, you know, bigger major ones every year, but we have to start doing something. We can't keep going to the taxpayers. The bottom line is, at the end of all this debate, the taxpayers in the city are going to have a little increase, whether it's a fee, whether it's a tax, it all comes out of the same pair of pants. There's four pockets in the average pair of pants, state, federal, city, and local, I mean, city, county, state, and federal. So it all comes out of the same pair of pants, in fairness, so, let's all remember that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schumber, Mayor, and Paul. Just a question. With the assessment of the Water Authority, that started already?
It has not. We sent out requests for quotes, we sent out requests for quotes on Monday, and we put a deadline of Friday to get those things back.
Okay.
So.
But we can't really negotiate until after we find out?
It probably wouldn't be good to do that, because we need to know a true value or an approximate value of what the assets down there are really worth, of the system itself and the authority.
We have had a couple of conversations actually with Paul Voitek and the Water Authority about it, but, you know, not specifics. And also, the interest rate environment right now, interest rates have been coming down, which means we'll be able to get more money, so the amount of money we're, and rates are expected to stay down for the, for the next month or two here at least, and so, we, we could be getting a lot more money than what we talked to them a month or so ago. But we need the assessment first, and then we've got that in our back pocket to move forward with.
Thank you. And do we know how much the school board tax is going up, or the school tax is going up?
I don't know offhand. I know it is going up.
Okay. And county taxes are going up too?
I think they're both minimal also.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I believe that's all our questions for this morning. Thank you very much for your time. We got our work cut out for us now, as you guys did your job, appreciate that. With that, we'll move on with the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, get back to work now, all right? Ladies? Moving on with the agenda, it appears we have a special presentation this morning, I believe, Rose. Do you know anything about it?
I know that Councilman Jones is handling the special presentation this morning.
Mr. President, thank you. Thank you, Rose. I'll do my initial conversation or talk from this point, from this seat. When I was, as many of you know, I was, I'm a part of a big family, I have 14 children, my parents had 14 children, nine boys, five girls, I'm the oldest. And I remember moving from West Fourth Street, where the Gannon football field is now, we rented a house there years ago, between, in the summer of my fifth and sixth grade year, seems like a long, long time ago, we moved to 1826 Holland Street, right on the corner of 19th and Holland, Housing Authority House, and we moved in, it was neighbors, huge garden, and behind the house, behind all the family gardens in the neighborhood, there was this raggedy old tennis court with like 12-foot-high fences, they were all rusted and leaned in and leaned out and really crazy, probably unsafe, they had, you know, there were no, obviously no nets in the court, but there were, the poles for the nets were still there, and weeds growing up everywhere, and so, being the oldest of, of 14, and then it was eight boys in a row, and we were like rough boys, like we just wanted, we couldn't, mama, get out the house, because y'all are going to tear my house up. We would run out into that field, in that little tennis court, and we tripped over rocks, we scraped up on gra, on glass, you know, that's normal stuff. But a couple of years later, all of a sudden, we started seeing trucks over there, and people coming and weeding and getting the weeds up and fixing up the fences, and we're kids, we don't know. And then one day, it seems like almost out of nowhere, I mean, again, it's a childhood memory for me, so it's pretty vivid, out of nowhere, do these four blue poles sticking up in the ground, and people started coming in and putting lines on the ground, and we were sports kids, so, that's a basketball, who putting a basketball court up over there? And the next thing you know, this really tall dude, and I say it like that, really tall dude came by and knew my father, you know, he calls him Mr. J, and he said, you know, we're doing this, and I don't know, that was a grown folks conversation, we, in my day, kids didn't get in grown folks conversation, we stayed out the way, but I knew something was changing in the neighborhood, and for the better. And, long story short, because this could be a long story, of, you know, 30 years of this, of service to our community in just that way. Long story short though, he not only came and did what he had to do to enhance a community with something as simple as recreation and basketball, but he came and he talked to all the families in the neighborhood, and he said that he would give my younger siblings, I don't know why you never offered me a job, but my younger siblings to clean up after the game, make sure the court was clean. He made investment in us, not just with brick and mortar and courts and nets and basketball rims, but he said, you know, go over there and work, keep it clean, own it, and it almost became like, it's Spoon's Court, but it's like, the subtopic was Jones Court, it was like the title, subtitle was Jones Court, because we were there all the time, and we lived right across the yard. Fast forward, I go off to college, and I come back home, I get married very early, so I come back home after graduation from college, and move into an apartment on 22nd and, between Parade and German, we would call it the hood, that was just home, wasn't really the hood, it was home. And we were moving in, and we didn't, and I'm a kid, I'm 22-years-old, you know, and moving in, and we thought that the electricity was going to be on by the time we moved in. Again, we got married early, had two children early, so we got a one, one and a half, almost two-year-old, and another one-year-old, and no electricity, in a new apartment, nervous, trying to be strong and not tell my parents. But there was something in the back of my mind, I said, oh, I got to call Mr. Spoon, Mr. Spoon know how to, and I called him, and it's kind of apropos for the season we're in, I said, Mr. Spoon, this is Curtis Junior, blah, 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 told him the whole story. He said, well, I got one question, well, my first question, are you registered to vote? And I said, yes, sir. He said, all right, I just wanted to check, because you know, elections come up. And in all seriousness, but he was serious, because he did say that. Mr. Witherspoon has been oft criticized, and maybe somewhat in the recent history, for being a social activist and a change-maker through sports and athletics and young people, but it's just one of the many ways that he's enhanced and blessed our community. Sometimes we take a long time on negative stuff, so I'm going to take a little bit of time on something positive for once. He has changed my life specifically, part of the reason I wanted to run for council because I saw somebody that I trusted and related to and who invested in me was on city council when I was a youngster, and a younger man. Not only is he an Erie guy, it's interesting, coming from New Jersey, you know, came to Gannon, played basketball, you know, even our own mayor tells stories about Spoon. The late Ben Wiley has stories about Spoon, you know, and he would say, just catch it if I miss it, and shoot it back to me, and I'll shoot it again, is what Wiley would tell Spoon. I share that because his, his involvement and his interconnectedness into our community, the most overt thing is people see sports and Spoon's Court. I mean, not just Erie, I mean, Gannon Hall of Fame, you know, the New Jersey State Athletic Hall of Fame. Sports is a great tool, but he used it in such a way to change, in my opinion, the community for the better. There's not a young person in this community that knows basketball on any significant level that doesn't know the name Melvin Witherspoon, and not just this generation, the last three generations, and that's just the truth. And so I want to take this moment, along with my fellow council members, along with, I think, the heart of most people in the city that know his, that know your heart, Mr. Spoon, and to say thank you. Thank you for all that you've done, all that you do. Something else I learned from you, you know, there's a bunch of where-asses and there-fours and there-let-it-bees, I'm not going to read all of those, but I wanted to, I wanted to, yeah, that too, Mr. President. But I just want to say this, that it is not only resolved in this resolution, in this tribute, but is resolved in most of our hearts, that you have been a gift to our community, and you're not going anywhere, but sometimes it's just nice to, isn't it nice to smell flowers when you can, and get them when you can still smell them, you know, and to be able to be appreciated, not, you know, something about a street named after you, that's got to be cool, but to be able to see it and drive on it is a whole nother thing. So to you, on a personal level, on a professional level, on a community level, thank you. You're doing more, but thank you for what you've done. Look, Kath, you want to clap, don't you? Look at you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So I want to offer this to you from us.
Mr. Jones, I just wanted to add something, when you're talking about basketball, I talk about basketball with Mel, but we've also been talking about the power of storytelling. And sometimes I sit with Mel, and he has stories that he doesn't always tell about how he grew up, about some of the things he experienced in Erie. And it, every time I talk to him, I learn something new, because I put myself in, maybe in his shoes, and think about what it was like to be growing up in Newark, and then to go to a junior college, and then to come to the frozen land of Erie, Pennsylvania. He just told me a story the other day about his junior college experience, and it's up to Mel to be able to share those stories, but it's amazing what I have learned about personal growth from sitting next to him and then having these conversations outside of city council, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think to echo that too, is, I had a football coach, Ron Costello, if you're an Erie person, you probably know Mr. Costello or the Costello family, and he said, he said to us, football is not about football or the game, it's about life, and it's a tool for understanding how to get knocked in the mouth, this is old language, you got to get knocked in the mouth and still get up and still keep moving forward, and you're a great example of that in a lot of ways, and you've done it with such cool, ice cold even, grace and savvy, the kids call it swag. You had swag before it was a term, and you still have it today, and you're a great elder and a great example, and I don't mean senior citizen elder, I mean that in the communal, indigenous manner of that word, an elder, an example, a leader, and you don't have to say much, but you do a lot, and that is a great example for us. So, again, from all of us, from my heart, from all of our hearts, thank you, and I want to walk this over to you and give it to you personally.
Amen. Don't sit down, you got to come around and shake all our hands.
Did the walking stick?
I think, I think I.
I think I took him on front.
I will read this, because the person who wrote it deserves to have it read, and I didn't mean any disrespect for not reading it. All that, all that beautiful verbiage I just gave, they don't know what this is about? I'm just kidding. Whereas, the city of, city council of the city of Erie wishes to pay special tribute to one of our own, city council member Melvin Witherspoon, as he was honored and inducted into. Whereas the city of, city council of the city of Erie wishes to pay special tribute to one of our own. Uh, city council member Melvin Witherspoon, uh, as he was honored and inducted into the Newark Athletic Hall of Fame on October seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. Whereas Melvin Witherspoon attended Central High School in Newark, New Jersey and excelled in basketball. He left Newark and moved to Erie in nineteen sixty, sixty-four. Um, nineteen sixty-four and attended Gannon University, where he was also inducted into the Gannon Men's Basketball Hall of Fame in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, since graduating from college, Mel has made Erie his adopted home. And even has a street name after him as he was honored, uh, for running Spoon's Athletic or Spoon's Youth Basketball League for over twenty-five years. Whereas, uh, Melvin Witherspoon has lived and worked in Erie and served its citizens in several capacities. The most recently, uh, and most recently, he has retired uh, after over fourteen years with the State Auditor General's Office in Erie as its regional director of Northwest Pennsylvania. Melvin Witherspoon became an Erie City Council Member in nineteen ninety-six through two thousand and three and decided he wasn't quite finished serving Erie as an elected official and ran again and won in two thousand and eleven. And has been a little, a city council member, uh, since two thousand and twelve. And I will do a little remix on this, and I believe, did you win another election? Last night? Boy, you're just an overachiever. Again, Mr. Witherspoon, thank you for all that you do, all that you've done and all that you will continue to do. And your legend, I would dare say legend, uh, and legacy is going to be through generations, uh, beyond you being here in this room. So thank you again. Thank you, Lori.
Curtis, no committee report out of you this morning.
See, you know, thank you, Mr. President, I'll see what I can do.
Where are we at here? Do we have anybody here this morning for a repository sale? Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Stephanie Seiner. I live at six thirty-three East Seventh Street, which is Seventh between Reed and Ash. And the bid I put in on the repository property is for six thirty-nine East Seventh Street, which is, um, currently an empty lot that is adjacent to another empty lot that is adjacent to my home. And in twenty seventeen, I purchased my home and I also put in a bid with the Redevelopment Authority for the lot that's right next to my house. Um, which I purchased from the Redevelopment Authority. And I've been gardening on it. Um, mostly flowers and some corn we grew this year and squash, which we trade with the neighbors and use for our own food consumption. And the reason why I would like to, um, obtain the lot that is next to my house and the other lot is just that, um, it often has trash in it, which we clean up, um, it sometimes becomes overgrown. And I'm invested in living on Seventh Street, uh, I'd like to expand my side yard and gardening efforts. And, um, yeah, that's why I would like to purchase the lot.
I can attest that Stephanie is a mover and a shaker in her neighborhood. When I was walking with the mayor through the neighborhood with the police program, I stopped and talked with Stephanie, she was out gardening and she has beautiful gardens. And she was collecting sunflowers that had been damaged, um, due to a recent storm. And she was very open and, uh, welcoming in her neighborhood. Thank you.
And Stephanie, I'm usually the one on council who asks the people who come to talk about repository sales if they have a plan and if they have resources to follow through. But at, like Kathy said, I know very well your work. Could you just, uh, tell the rest of council about your efforts, um, with the school district in terms of, um, community gardens? So just real briefly let them know that I don't have to pose those questions, because I know I've written about you, but if you could just tell people what you've done with community gardens and sustainability.
Yeah, I moved to Erie from Philadelphia, um, because there was an Americor Vista volunteer position opening with the public schools to engage youth in outdoor activities, gardening and environmental education, and that's what I've been doing. Um, I'm now in my fourth year. And we have fourteen gardens at Erie's public schools. We run after-school programs, summer programs and classroom visits where teachers will bring their students out to the garden. And we grow a huge range of food and flowers and vegetables and fruits that the students get to sample and take home and that go into the schools. Um, I love doing it, it's really a great combination of what I care about and a chance to serve the community. Yeah, and I have a snow shovel and I have a weed whacker and a push lawn mower, so that's how I plan to maintain the lot.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other repository sales this morning? Any other repositories? Hearing none, that'll bring us to citizens to be heard.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Ball and I live at seven forty-seven East Twenty Second Street. I am here about club energy on Twenty Second and Wayne. Um, there has been less shootings in the past few weeks, but the noise is still waking up the neighborhood every single week, weekend. Um, I've asked that this has been addressed, you know, in any way possible. I mean, it's just, it's not fair to us that live there and own our homes that this is not being dealt with. There's no reason that noise ordinances are not being enforced or they're loitering. I mean, we have a right to our, our quiet neighborhood back. There's no reason it should be in a residential neighborhood. Uh, I had a meeting with Michael Outlaw a month ago and we had, I requested me and Paul Ojeski for a meeting with the owners and he said he would set that up. And we have yet to have a meeting and it's been over a month now. So it's not that we're not trying to work with anybody, but it seems like nobody is working with us. And it is beyond frustrating, because if this was happening, you know, in nicer neighborhoods or where you folks live, I'm sure it would not be tolerated to this extent, because this has been an ongoing issue since July. And we have gotten no relief from it. And I'm not sure, you know, what it's gonna take, you know? If it's gonna take somebody actually getting killed for it to be addressed that this is a nuisance, this is a problem, this should not be within our city limits. But I mean, it has to stop. And I would like for you guys to work on an ordinance to either ban them or curtail, like they can't be open past two AM, they can't do this, I mean, just so they have more regulations, so it is not a nuisance. You know, if it's not something that we can get out of the city. Um, and it's, it's costing a lot of taxpayers money with the overtime with the police, because they have come and sat, you know, extra hours on weekends to help curtail the violence. And that's not fair to the taxpayers, because it's affecting people that don't even live in that neighborhood or don't patronize that building. And it's, it's not fair to, to put it on everybody, because they cannot act appropriately. So I would like to see something done to address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Roxy Ann Benson. I also live at seven forty-seven East Twenty Second. A few weeks ago, there was an altercation from people running out of the club in front of my house yelling, screaming, there was probably six to eight people involved. They ran up to a house about three houses west of me. Someone had gotten into a, a dark-colored SUV. It was all, all females. You could actually see the person inside the SUV being punched numerous times by someone outside of their car. This went on for maybe half a minute, forty-five seconds. And all of a sudden, the SUV sped off, no lights, no nothing. Went right in front of our house and you would, as soon as it passed the house, you look over across the street and there's someone laying in the street. Whether they got hit by the, uh, the car, whether they fell trying to chase the car, I don't know. But she was hurt, her friends went and picked her up, they come across the street toward our house again, down towards the club, yelling, screaming, carrying on. The police did show up. They can't do anything, because once they know the police are there, very close, they scatter, nobody's there to talk to anybody. Nobody presses charges, nothing. And yes, I do sit out in my enclosed front porch weekends from like midnight until four, four-thirty in the morning, just to see what's going on, to protect my property, to try to protect maybe my neighbor's property from being damaged. There's been shootings since July. Personal property has been destroyed. Vehicles have been hit. Numerous, numerous fights. It needs to be taken outside the city. Not in a residential area. As my daughter stated, two o'clock, you're done. That's the way it is for all the other, and I know they don't serve alcohol, they're not supposed to. They don't have a liquor license. I don't know what they're contributing to the tax coffers of the city. But it's costing us emotional harm every weekend. It will slow down, because it is getting bad weather out now. But come nice weather again, they'll be right back at it. And if it is being closed, closed, being closed down, it will probably happen again that, oh, well, okay, I'm gonna get closed down, I'm gonna let my friend take it over. So now it's a new name, new entity, whatever. And it's gonna start all over again. The neighbors, and you were given a petition with over fifty names on it a few weeks ago. Did you contact any of those people? No. Did you contact any of us? No. So and the, the incident that I spoke about when the lady was laying in the street after the car took off, I called the mayor's personal cell number at like three or three-thirty in the morning. Got his message, left a message, tell him, please call us back and we need to discuss this. Whatever, never got a phone call, never got acknowledgement or anything. City council is elected by the citizens of Erie. Including our neighborhood. We need to see you do something. A few of you have contacted us in the past, but the past couple of months, nothing's been heard from or anything being done. We don't have any contact from council members. Uh, Michael Outlaw was supposed to set that meeting up, he never, never came. So I mean, if the city's not interested in our neighborhood, why should we be interested in the city? We talked about emotional wellbeing of our citizens of Erie before, Mr. Jones. We're part of the city. We live on the east side, may not be the best neighborhood, it's not the worst either. It could be a very nice neighborhood again. Somehow restrict energy from operating the way they do and where they are at. Not only that, but to not let them go to another area. And have these folks have to go through the same things we are. Twenty Fourth and Ash, I understand, is getting not well. Rumors. Supposed to be a restaurant, no liquor license, blah, blah, blah. But there's been problems up there already and he hasn't, uh... So you know, think about all the citizens, not just certain areas. Not just certain people. We're all taxpayers, you all get our money, one way or the other, so. Please, please keep everybody in mind in that neighborhood and where else they might start up again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lorraine Reinsel. I live at seven thirty-six East Twenty Second Street. This is also about the club energy. Now, you've talked about the past and how we've, you know, in, in, involved. Okay, my dad used to tell me about them running the horses across Twenty Second Street. That's how long this house has been in my family. Now, my mother is elderly. She's ninety-six years old. She is afraid to be home. I've taken to where I don't work weekends, because they park in my driveway. They have no right to park in my driveway. I call the police, they drive by. I have neighbors, they sort of watch out, but I worry about my mom. She shouldn't have to give up the family home for these people. They need to uh, do something with them. I don't need them yelling outside her bedroom. I don't need her to worry about them. She does everything she can to keep the, the neighborhood nice. She does her flowers. I know she's ninety-six years old and people do see her out there. She is very patriotic, she is not prejudicial or nothing. She speaks to anybody that comes by. Now, why should these people keep her up at night and make her worry about the neighborhood she's living in? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, coun, council members. My name is Michelle Jagi. I'm the Census Outreach Coordinator for Erie. Thank you for the opportunity to share some information about the two thousand and twenty census. As the Census Outreach Coordinator, I have been working to connect with and educate community members about the two thousand and twenty census. Next year, everybody will get an invitation to respond to the survey in their mailbox around mid-March. And we want people to know they have the option to respond via internet, touch-tone phone, the paper form, or in-person interview. We want people to know that this decennial census is fast and easy. It's only ten questions and takes only about ten minutes. And that it is safe, that all, in identifying information is protected by federal law. We additionally want people to know that it is vital to respond to the census. And every person counted relates to two thousand, one hundred dollars a year, every year for ten years that comes back into our community for federally funded programs such as Medicare, Medicaid, housing assistance and utility benefits. We want people to also know that it equates to fair representation in Congress. Since the two thousand census, Pennsylvania has lost three congressional seats and we're in range to lose an additional seat based on the two thousand and twenty census results. So we want people to know and be prepared that next year, their count in the census is vital to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
My name is Georgia Anne Smith Carter. I reside at eleven forty-two East Twentieth for thirty-three and a half years. First of all, I'd like to thank Mel Witherspoon as well. My son played the basketball up under him and has a BA degree and a master's degree and doing very well in Ohio. Thank you again, Mel. In two thousand and fourteen, my neighbors inherit their parents' house. And in doing that, he gutted it and remodeled it beautifully from in to out. He poured concrete, took all the grass out, poured concrete from front to back, it's all concrete. He poured actually all the way over to my property. Well, that became an incident where they had a sitter, a house sitter at their home and was on my property. The police came. They explained to me that they felt that the neighbor had over-poured onto my property and I should get a survey. In two thousand and fourteen, I got a survey on my property. And doing that, the neighbor installed a six-foot fence, like chain link fence, to separate the properties after the fact. And doing that, they start posting all types of threatening signs toward my home. That was guns pointing at me saying, uh, if you trespass, this is what will happen to you, or you need, you're gonna need more than prayer if you trespass. All these was fa, on their fence, but facing my home. Called police and they told me that that was their right, that was their fence, they can do whatever they wanted on their fence. In August of two thousand and eighteen, um, I noticed on my security cameras, I left home at eight o'clock that morning. I noticed on my security camera, my neighbor sweeping and cleaning her yard. Taking the trash, throwing over the fence onto my property. Called police that way as well, too. Rather than them come and check out the situation on my camera and looking to see what I, I wanted, they didn't. They, she called as well, they went to her home. And in doing that, they gave me a parking ticket in front of my house, saying that my, the tail end of my car was in her driveway. Okay, that never, never, never got sawed. That never, never, never got solved, other than I got a ticket for being parked there. Five days later, I get citations for harassment and distributing harmful materials for blowing and cleaning on my property. Well, in question, she kept telling them that that was part of her property, but on that side of the fence, would you going down, this is my property, I just had it surveyed. Well, they kept giving me those citations saying I was on their property when I have a survey saying that this is my property. This was all done in 2018. 2019, I get citations for excessively cleaning and blowing my property. I get five of them. I ended up with six harassment citations for blowing on my property, one disorderly conduct for supposedly spraying chemicals in the neighbor's face, which never happened and never was proved. I end up with bird cages in houses alongside that whole fence, it had to be at least 15 of them alongside the whole perimeter of the property, with at least four or five bird cages on each pole, and that was to so-called poop all over her deck, that so-and-so won't like it. Called on that way, nothing I can do about it, it's her fence, she can put those on there. You've got two inches in between houses, you allow somebody to put a 20 bird feeder? Well, yes, and that's what it did, it was all over my deck, all over my garden, they sitting there waiting to get to her food. So in doing that, I purchased, I called, I've been all through the city, everything I did, I called to see if I was violating. I was told, I can't see why you did that, so I purchased a bird feeder, just to keep them off my machine, not to hurt any bird, but they would go around to get to her food. Okay, did I, I received three misdemeanors for a bird annoyance. After being told, I didn't think that was a problem, you can buy the machine, I spent almost $300 for this machine to keep them, just to go, go get the food, just don't get on my deck. It worked, but I got three misdemeanors for that. Now, every time I go outside to blow, out of nowhere, I'm getting a harassment citation summary to go to summer, on my property. I'm blowing on my property, I have cameras, they won't look at my cameras. So now I, I'm out of $4,500 in attorney fees, I'm on my third attorney. As of Monday, October the 8th, I was excited with another one where I supposedly used my blower on my property and I annoyed the neighbor. That was 7:50 Monday, I paid for them not to show because she's supposedly out of town. I come home, look on my camera, she's in her backyard filling her bird feeders up and blowing her blower. I've done all I can do legally, I don't know what else to do, other than to come to the city and say, somebody can help me solve this. I've done another survey, February the 9th.
Ma'am, unfortunately, your time is up. But what is the address next to your?
1146 East 20th. Thank you so much for listening to me, council.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Three years ago, I visited that situation, I took pictures, and I brought it to council that she recommended and I presented to council that we pass a resolution or ordinance that to raise money. She was willing to put a sign, no parking, she's willing to pay $100 for that sign, I think Kaz remembers this, and throughout the city, they have it at St. V's area, no parking, residential parking. She was willing to do that. It didn't go anywhere. She's been dealing with this for the, for the longest. Now, we giving tickets for you blocking your own driveway, but on the 22nd Street issue, we have people driving and parking in their driveway. And in that situation, I think when the police come, they need to have a tow truck following them, block it, tow that car out to the lady's driveway, and that may help the situation. But she's been going through this for the longest, and I've been on top of it as best I can, and now it's time to take some stronger measures, because she's out of money, 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 and it's not her fault. She has to get some help, and I think we need to do something. I'm not sure what, but we're gonna do something. Thank you, Gigi.
Good morning.
My name's Fred Ettefr, I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. I'm a homeowner and a taxpayer and a certified orientation and mobility specialist. I would first like to thank Kathy Schaaf this time and also Liz at other times for setting an example of an inclusive way of filling vacancies on authorities, boards, and commissions. She's advertised her vacancy that she has to fill on the airport authority, and I hope that more people follow her example. I want to congratulate Michael Keys on his victory last night, and I'm hoping that he will also be adopting the same practice. I wish the rest of the council members would do the same. I'm concerned that if we're, I don't mind paying my taxes, I pay taxes, but if we are doing things like proposing a LERTA and then charging a $100 fee, which is supposed to cover the cost of processing the fee, but then moving it into a community reinvestment fund, which means we are eating the cost of processing the LERTA fee, which means I'm either subsidizing the LERTA processing or I'm subsidizing the community reinvestment fund. We should be charging fees commensurate with the cost of doing business. We should be charging fees commensurate with the cost of inspecting projects that go on in this city. As you, we should also be looking at the solid waste arrears. If you go to the solid waste arrears, there's a phenomenal amount of money that people owe on their solid waste bills, and I don't know why we're not going after that. And some of those are people who are pretty well off. As you know, I'm concerned about pedestrian issues, and I was really disappointed that when there was a, we established the active transportation plan, I thought I would be included, because I'm one of the most invisible pedestrian advocates in this city, but I wasn't. And I was told that I wasn't needed and that the city planner herself was a pedestrian advocate. Well, gosh, if she is, how come she's not addressing some of the problems that I'm seeing? How come she's not addressing the chronic failure of the city to enforce their own contracts to ensure pedestrian access? How come she is not, and I'll stop saying that because it's ridiculous, but why is it that after several times that I have called in the failure of the owner of, I think it's 1626 Raspberry, I think it's probably Bizarro's Auto Salvage, but on their front on 18th Street, the sidewalk is not maintained at all, it's totally overgrown. So you cannot walk the sidewalk on the north side of 18th between Cranberry and Raspberry. And on the south side, there's constantly trucks and vehicles parked there, and I've turned both of those things in. Basically, there's no pedestrian access on that block of 18th Street because the city doesn't bother to cite people for failure to maintain sidewalk access. Right now, I'm very concerned about the situation with the UPMC field where there is a closure of the sidewalk at 10th and Holland and mid-block between, near French. I have seen several times, I saw a family walking in the street along the north side of 10th Street there, because they didn't know until they get to mid-block between, east of French, that the sidewalk was closed, so they walked in the street. Last night, I was, I went and checked and saw if there was any change, and there were people walking in the street in the dark because they had gotten to mid-block and discovered the sidewalk was closed. If you are a pedestrian with a visual impairment and you're coming from the south at 10th and Holland and you are going north, there's no safe place to land, and there are major trip hazards from the support of the fences closing. I am in conversation with Casey Wells about this, but the Erie Events is gonna have other projects, too. They're gonna have the Warner Theater, and this is not unlike Erie Insurance and Gannon and so many other places, construction projects in the city, and this one is public funding, should not be allowed to not provide safe pedestrian access. I would be delighted to take anybody who wants, put a blindfold on you, give you a cane, and I'll lead you, and you'll see how hard it is to walk when there's no way to know what's gonna happen with the sidewalk. I wish that the city would take seriously the need for safe pedestrian access during construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens be heard this morning? Morning, Mr. McDonald.
Morning. Welcome back, sir. Thank you. I wanted to talk to the mayor this morning, but he gone. Do you represent the mayor?
I do.
Please state your name.
I want, oh, you know me.
I know that, you know that, but.
My name is.
For the record.
McDonald, 660 East 19th Street. That sufficient enough?
Perfect.
What I want to talk to you about is a problem we're having out there on 21st Street. My brother live out there, he, you go along there, you see a black chain, black chain fence down through there. You got, just a chain, chain fence. He's having a problem with the guy across the street. The guy don't want nobody to park over there. I parked over there one time and I come back out, he done threw dog poop all over my truck. I, I, I called the police. They came, they came shaking his hand. He's a dope dealer. The dude is a dope dealer. I tried to talk to his dad the other day to tell him to let up. I see, how come he's so stupid? His dad is stupid. The tree, the fruit don't fall far from the tree. That's a that long chain. You can't, when you can't just talk to nobody. Now, I didn't want to come down here and put his business in the street, but that's where it should be. That's why I want to talk to the mayor, I want to know, does the snitches, he's a snitch is what he is. He's a snitch, because the police do not bother him. And hey, he's selling drugs just like running in and out of the airport. He don't want nobody to park over there because he want that space for his business. I want something done about this before something real bad happen, because we're not afraid of nobody. We're not afraid of nobody. I know, we come here to die. We gonna die one time. I ain't heard telling nobody coming back but Jesus Christ. I wish you would look into this before something bad happen. Now, would you look into it? Will you look into it?
I know you mentioned East 21st Street, what in 21st?
You don't know where 21st Street is?
We know where 21st is, but what 100 block?
Between Perry and, between Perry and, not Wayne.
East Ave?
East Avenue, East Avenue.
900 block.
Yeah, 900 block. So I, I appreciate if you go and look into this because something is gonna happen and it ain't gonna be good. He's telling peoples, I'm the mayor of this round here, he's the mayor. In other words, he run that block, but he don't. He can't run that block, we can't let him take over like that. He's been selling drugs ever since he been there, just selling drugs. He should be cool, he should be quiet, he should be laid back, but now, he wants everybody to know that he's the boss. He ain't no boss over there. And I hope y'all look into it. Now, you can look into it if you want to, but when the stuff hit the fan and you haven't looked into it, we won't be blamed at what happens, because something is going to happen. Something is going to happen, because something should have happened when he threw that dog poop on my truck, but the police came, then he got a camera up. The police wouldn't even insist that he showed a camera. Now, this boy over there on Wayne, not Wayne, uh, you remember when the guy shot the guy and he, they, he got him on the camera, but he didn't want to give the camera up?
Ash.
You remember that?
Yep.
Okay. They, they didn't even insist that see in his camera, and he had, he got a camera, he got cameras. Well, I hope y'all look into this, because this is a serious thing, and you know I wouldn't be coming down here saying nothing about it if it wasn't serious. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other citizens be heard this morning? Any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none, Rose?
Ordinances for first reading. Council file 16127, an ordinance closing and vacating a portion of a public alleyway at the request of the Glenwood United Methodist Church located on the property at 2931 Myrtle Street, between Myrtle and West 29th Street, running parallel to Peach Street with reservation of existing utility rights of way. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Ms. Kwiatowski, the council file ordinance number 16127, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schaaf, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City council read and adopt, council file ordinance.
Mr. President, this is the pastor of Glenwood Church, correct?
Yes, correct.
And I think you may, I don't know if you were waiting to speak about it during the vote or what, but.
No, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Matthew Judd, I'm the pastor at Glenwood United Methodist Church. I'm just here to make myself available in case the council had any questions about the ordinance. So I'm here, if you do, great, I'll answer the questions, if not, I'll go sit back down.
The good thing is that all that silence you heard was, it passed.
Okay. Excellent.
So it was a holy hush.
Ma'am, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
City council read and adopt, council file ordinance number 16127 by a 7, nay 0, on Council file 16128, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $15,000 from unappropriated and anticipated, unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof, contribution is from the Mercy Terrace Apartments for the purpose of police fire and winter maintenance equipment. By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Jones, the council file ordinance number 16128, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schaaf, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City council read and adopt, council file ordinance number 16128 by a 7, nay 0, on first Council file number 16129, an ordinance amending ordinance number 261958, the traffic code of the city of Erie by the installation of stop signs at three intersections, one at West 43rd Street in Melrose, the second, West Lakeview Boulevard in State, and the third, Prospect Avenue and Cameron Street. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mrs. Schaaf, the council file ordinance number 16129, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schaaf, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City council read and adopt, council file ordinance number 16129 by a 7, nay 0, on first Council file 16130, an ordinance appropriating. Council file 16130, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $72,040 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from PennDOT. The funds will be used to carry out the LED replacement for railroad preemption signing project through the 2018 Automatic Red Light Enforcement Funding Program. The project includes replace the railroad preemption signs located at Bayfront Parkway and East 6th Street, Bayfront Parkway and East 8th Street, Bayfront Parkway and East 10th Street, and the intersection of Bayfront Connector and McClellan Avenue. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mrs. Schaff, the council file ordinance number 16130, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Ms. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16130 by A7, nay zero, on first reading.
Mr. President, before we do the next one, do, I wanted to, I have a few questions about the first reading on 16131. Do I say that after Rose?
After she reads what it is.
Council file 16131, an ordinance requiring childcare facilities to obtain an annual childcare facility certificate of occupancy. Discussion?
Okay, I, I'm going to vote for this on first reading, but I have a number of questions that I would like answered before I vote for this on second reading. My first question is, is how will the Erie inspection information be integrated into the state system on childcare inspections? I want to thank Jake Welsh and Lori from the City Clerk's Office. I had inquired, I thought a good way to find out about the need for childcare facilities would be to look at the zoning hearing board, requests for variances. Now, not everyone would have come through there, but, and I haven't had a chance to put together all the information they found for me, but one of, I learned a couple of things. One is that there was a request for a variance for a childcare facility on Payne Avenue, and the person making that request, which was granted, talked about the, the need for childcare in the city of Erie and, and why they wanted to offer childcare at that particular site. Jake also pointed me to a link, and if you Google Compass, click Applied Benefit, it's from the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services, to be able to find childcare and other early learning programs. It's a very robust search system. You can do it by zip code, you can do it by the age of your child, and when you get to a particular facility, you can see what type of the annual inspection from the state and whether there were any actual violations that had to be corrected. It's a really good information, and I think that we need to know whether the information that the city is going to gather is going to be integrated into that system so that parents can, can look for that information. I also would like to know when there will be a gathering of family childcare providers to educate them and hear their questions about the new ordinance. And Ms. Arrington had a great suggestion during the study session. There is going to be an upfront cost, it's my understanding from the fire chief, of up to $1,500 perhaps to do the connected smoke detectors. Sonia had suggested that perhaps there would be grant funding. I would like to know who is going to take the initiative on that grant funding. There's been tremendous interest on the part of the Erie Community Foundation and a united way in the last couple of years to provide scholarship funding for children to get quality early childhood education. So perhaps there's an opportunity there. There's the Women's Fund at the Community Foundation, but we need to have some really specific answers about what the upfront cost will be to childcare providers. And I also finally think that community leaders are going to need to examine the need and availability of overnight care for children of working parents. I clicked through a couple of the childcare providers on that website, and I think I did zip code 16502, and most of the ones I, there were some that provide nighttime care, but only up to 11:59 PM. I didn't find any overnight care. That doesn't mean it's not there. I didn't have a chance to look for every single childcare provider, but I just think we need to do some additional homework. I know that the chief is anxious to get this passed, but we need to do it right, and we need to make sure that we are keeping children safe and also finding out about the needs of working parents. Those are my questions. So I'm voting yes on this, but then have, have questions that need to be answered.
Thank you.
By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Jones, a council file ordinance number 16131, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16131 by A7, nay zero, on first reading. Council file number 16132, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $2 million from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received as a redevelopment assistance capital program grant from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Office of the Budget, which will be utilized for the renovation and associated construction of the JMC Ice Arena. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the council file ordinance number 16132, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski...
Mr. President. Mr. President. Just a quick question, and I apologize that I meant to speak with Chris about this earlier, just with some of the other grants and questions around other organizations and groups receiving the same source of funding, and all, it's very intense, right? So the, the operation, the navigation of it, the make, the compliance and administrative components of the, of these grants come through and have to be administered through the city. And I don't, again, I, I wanted to ask Chris the specific question, but I'll just ask it out loud. What, is there an adequate compensation for the staff time? Because I've talked to multiple people outside the city that do economic development, and again, the, the intensity of managing and facilitating these grants and these processes are intense. And so we recently, in the Economic Development Department of this, of our city, brought in the homes and housing, it's a whole, it's, it's a totally different department, and we're getting a lot of these, I don't know if it's more than usual, but it just seems like we're maybe more aware of them. A lot of these R cap grants, that's taking a lot of time from our staff. Do we have, or are we being compensated enough? We could always add a little more cash. But are we being adequately compensated for the facilitation of these grants? And if not, is there a way of maneuvering that out of that money or, you know, whatever? Again, just a question, not wanting to vote against it, but just for clarity.
I'll, I'll talk to Chris about that. I don't think that we get any funding. I think that's just our responsibility to administer that grant.
Okay.
But I will, I will look into it.
Thank you. And I'll do that too. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16132 by A7, nay zero, on first reading. Council file 16133, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $136,932 to be received from the U.S. Department of Justice as an innovations in community-based crime reduction program grant and will be utilized to focus on Erie East Side neighborhood crime reduction. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Ms. Kwiatowski, the council file ordinance number 16133, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Ms. Kwiatowski...
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Again, just for future reference, so if, you know, being able to get more clarity, I'm not sure if we got a memo on it. I know a lot of time we do get memos and info, but are sometimes more detailed than others, but just, you know, it's a broad based, it's broad language, you know, crime reduction, et cetera, et cetera. So if we can get more detail, just moving forward, not now. It's moving forward, just maybe some more specificity. And again, I didn't read, maybe I didn't read clearly or didn't see, but if we could do that and just be sure, because those are the kind of questions, so, I know this is kind of a broad junk, but we do get money coming into the city for economic development and other things based on the, the social ills of our community, and we don't always see that money being used to deal with those social ills directly. And so I wasn't sure what the rules around this was and all of those dynamics, so...
Did you get a memo on it?
I didn't see it. It doesn't mean it didn't come. So I just want to be clear on that. So I will look again, but just for future reference, that's my question.
Well, I think, I think in fairness, sometimes we get them after the agenda meeting, and we don't have adequate time to read them. I mean, when you get, I don't know about the other members, like one, I think one of our memos had about 13. I tried to read it last night on my way back from out of town. It was a little difficult with the car bouncing, but if you can get them out a, a, a little bit earlier so we have a chance to digest them. Like when you get them, we should get them, okay? That's, that's my, kind of my theory.
Okay, we get them at the agenda meeting.
Pardon?
We get them at our agenda meeting.
Yeah, but I mean, somebody has to know ahead of time what's going on.
Okay.
So delays on or somebody should, so council knows, we don't have to, it, it, this job is difficult enough. We have some people work and other people, we don't always have a lot of time to, so, you know, in fairness, like Mr. Jones said, we get a lot of things maybe a day or two before the meeting. And it's, it's tough to digest the agenda, that, all the bills and payroll stuff we get, and that all comes within the last, you know, 48 hours.
This, this one specifically is one that we announced last Thursday at the press conference. We just got notification that we were receiving this. It's actually, the full amount of it is nearly a million dollars, and this is going to be used in the East Bay Front. A year will be done in concert with our research partner, the Mercy Civic Institute, to look at what the causes of crime are, what, you know, specifically what's happening in the neighborhood to really kind of research what's going on and figure out a strategy moving forward. The three years subsequent to the year of research then will be spent implementing the plan. And all of the neighborhood groups in East Bay Front are partners in this, and we're looking forward to getting started on that. I think the first meeting of the steering committee is the 12th. They'll all be getting together to plan next steps, but they're probably, I don't know, because I didn't see the memo, but they're probably appropriating...
I don't see the memo in...
You didn't see a memo?
No.
They're probably appropriating the sum to the Mercy Civic Institute, get started on the research, but I can double check that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16133 by A7, nay zero, on first reading.
Mr. President? May we move the balance of the agenda?
Yes, seconded. Do we have any separations?
I just wondered, number four, maybe we did get a memo about that. I don't know if it, I'm not sure what the easement is for. I know where the property is, but...
If you look in the packet that I signed, there's a picture and explanation.
Oh, okay. Maybe we could pass that along, Rose?
You want the attachment to the easement for 14, 16 State?
Right.
Okay, this is, I'll make these back.
I will. Okay, thank you.
There's diagrams and things in there.
Were there any separations, Mr. President?
I don't believe so.
Okay, moving the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Ms. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. That takes us to a wave rules.
Is this the wave the rules for?
This is the wave the rules for the support of the community college. Moving, or voting to waive the rules, Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Ms. Kwiatowski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. By Ms. Allen, seconded by Ms. Schaff, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, whereas the Erie City Council recognizes that access to affordable post-secondary education is key for Erie youth to boost their earning power and to achieve their full potential. And whereas Erie City Council understands that it is necessary for our world-class employers to hire highly skilled local workers and also have access to facilities to retain workers to meet their evolving needs, we as members of Erie City Council respectfully ask the Pennsylvania Board of Education to approve Erie County's application for an Erie Community College when the Board meets November 13th to 14th. Creating a community college for Erie will build on the many initiatives already underway in Erie to make this an inclusive, innovative, and productive community of choice for residents, for newcomers, for employers, and for many partners in higher education who make many contributions to the region's economy and sense of well-being. Discussion?
The mayor has also, I'm sorry, Mr. President. I believe Renee, the mayor, has also sent a letter of support.
Yes.
I didn't, I, we got a copy of it, I didn't have a chance to read it.
Yes.
So I think it amplifies the, the support for this initiative. So thank you to the mayor for also doing that.
Thank you.
All right, roll call. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. This resolution will adopt seven to zero. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Ms. Allen, you ready?
Yes, I'm ready, and I'm going to pass along this elevate, if everybody wants to look at the sketches, thank you, Kathy, for letting us know about that. I attended a meeting with Renee, I think it was at JL Nick Consultants that did the HR report to the city. I commend the administration for taking this step, which yielded some very good recommendations on how to improve training, onboarding for new employees, beginning to look at performance evaluations, and there was a strong call there to update technology throughout the various departments. That's a really succinct summary of what took place there, but it was, it was really good, and I think one of the things was that, it was one of those initiatives where there was buy-in from employees because they were asked to contribute to, you know, how the HR function, human resources function can be improved for the city. I attended two sessions of the Jefferson Society's Global Summit. The first one was Camille Bousset, I think I'm pronouncing that correctly, of Brookings Institution's Race, Prosperity, and Inclusion Initiative. And she reminded us once again that we really have to be intentional about looking at inclusion in our community, and we need to have an inclusion lens whenever we take action, including, you know, at City Council. The second one was about harmful algae blooms, and that was pretty alarming about how these are increasing, and we really need to be paying attention. I also want to commend the administration for having the city sign on to 2030, which is, we have a commitment to making Erie sustainable and, you know, saving energy and, and looking at climate change. I, this wasn't part of my City Council work, but I attended Bobby Solak's presentation at the Polish Falcons on Erie's Polish history, contributions in churches, and it's wonderful. I hope he does it again somewhere. Can I take a second to take, drink my tea because I'm losing my voice, so don't lose my time.
I applaud you.
Thank you, sorry. Anyhow, but attending that session was another good reminder of how immigrants have always contributed to the city. I wanted to alert you to a story that was in the Pittsburgh Post-Gazette on November 3rd, 2019, a story of survival exploring what it means to be a refugee by Oli Nuri, whose family was forced to flee after the first Iraq war. Here's a quote from his op-ed piece. "My family was granted asylum in the United States, and we settled in Erie, PA. I had never witnessed such beauty, a sea of green farther than the eyes could see and as vast as the desert sands to which I had grown accustomed." But then he went on to talk about how when he was a young, a seven-year-old, he was bullied, and he said, "For the first time, I was made painfully aware of the fact that I was brown and that that label was the new cross I had to bear." He now works as a software engineer in Las Vegas and is the author of a poetry collection, Rain and Embers. I mention him because of concerns I've raised about the claims that the new project on Perry Square is going to serve new Americans with a culinary kitchen and, and their businesses. And this is occurring at the same time that the Trump administration has dramatically cut the number of refugees being admitted into the United States. And remember, refugees are people who have... And remember, refugees are people who have been displaced by war or famine. The administration is also dramatically cutting the number of legal immigrants who can apply to come to the United States. So, that, the richness that we have and our refurbishing of our populations is going to be stopped because of what is going on in Washington. Heads up that December second will mark Harry T. Burley Day in the city of Erie. There's a number of commemorations going on. We can talk more about that. I want to thank Johnny Johnson, all, all involved in that. There's going to be a historical marker that's going to be unveiled, and I think that's the same night as the downtown delights, when the Christmas, or the tree is lit up. And I had one final idea after listening to the various neighborhood concerns. We all do want to solve the one where, you know, the, the energy club is having problems, the woman who has a neighbor dispute. We get these calls from, I've had some calls about people from Pennsylvania Avenue. It's one of these things where I don't know what to do, because I don't know how to sol- energy is probably a different one, but where you have two neighbors in dispute, and I just Googled, and I know some cities have neighborhood mediation centers, so you don't get to the district justice level. I don't know if that might be something we might pursue, and if there's another way to, to solve these issues, and I don't know about, what was the other woman's name, Mel, who was here, who had the-
Gigi.
Gigi? I mean, that may have already, I mean, that's already in the legal system. It just might be something to pursue, and Renee, I don't know how many of those complaints you get fr- at, with Moss. I'm sure you probably get a lot compared to even what we're hearing, but it's just ones where I feel frustrated, you know, somebody's complaining about the neighbor is, is doing those sorts of things, harassing you, and there might, there might be some solutions we could find out there. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Witherspoon?
Skip.
Never.
First and foremost, I want to thank my colleagues and Mr. Jones for the presentation. I was sitting here just looking around and didn't realize until he started talking about the poles that we removed and all the things that has transpired. He took me back. Liz is always talking about transparency. Well, that didn't take place, because I'm the only one that didn't know what was going on up here. They kept a secret from me. Even the clerk's office, I had no idea. But I want to thank you very much, and it's so true that you want to smell the flowers while you're here, and I guess that's just my calling. What else? Oh, I want to thank the citizens of Erie for their vote of confidence. I also want to thank the Erie Fighter Fighters for their endorsement, along with Erie Crawford Central Labor Council, and all the citizens that did get out and vote. I appreciate it, and I will continue to work on your behalf. Understand that you're not going to agree with everything we decide up here, but we'll do the best we can with what we have, and we'll research wherever we can. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Schoff?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that, yes, I am having an appointment to the Airport Authority Board, and I did make it public, and I am accepting resumes through this Friday, November eighth, and I am so thankful already to the most wonderful responses and resumes that I have received so soon after putting out that I have this appointment. And I am meeting with representative at the Airport Authority, Derek, and just really impressed with the qualifications that the people are putting in their resumes, highly qualified people. Thank you for the response, that so many people are wanting to commit themselves on a volunteer basis to be a part of this board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Arrington?
I don't really have a report. I just wanted to salute Mr. Mel Witherspoon. That was a great achievement, well-deserved, and you're not only a basketball coach, but you're a father to these young men and these young women, because we know a lot of them don't have that father figure in their home. And I just want to thank you for the continued support and help you give our youth and the community, and I love you.
Love you too. Thank you. Mr. Kwiatowski?
Yes, we recently met with the ONE Pension Board, and that fund continues to move forward in a very positive fashion, and closing the gap into full funding. Met with the Airport Authority, and right now I believe they're conducting up until the eighth, and you'd have to call them to check if you can get in there. They're actually enrolling people into the TSA Pre-Check program, which is a lot better than having to drive to Ashtray Buella. I believe, I think that's where the site, the closest site is. So, you can go out there and hopefully, if you call them, see if you can make an appointment, you'll be able to secure TSA Pre-Check if you so desire. They reported they have increased boarding over the last few months, which is always good, and they're constantly working to get more flights. What'll probably happen is, the flights may stay the same, but the, the seats on the aircraft may increase. So, they're constantly working, they're dealing with a shortage of pilots, a shortage of hardware, and Erie being not a, not a, what do you call it, a A-one airport, like you would in Pittsburgh, Chicago, Cleveland, any of the bigger airports. We're at the end of the pecking order with the airlines, but they're continuing to do a good job, and hopefully, we'll get that airport really moving forward. Talking about those citizens, and I agree with you, Liz, we hear it time and time again. This has been going on so long, and now I hear, I, I didn't want it to come true, but I believe the one that you're talking about on Twenty-Fourth Street was the old Veterans Club, and I believe, right? Maybe?
No, it was a Warsaw, it was the-
Oh, I think there's a, what is a, there's-
You could be a bike club.
Oh, okay. I was, okay, I was up a couple, there's probably, there's probably three or four right now that we have to start looking at, and there's rumors of a fourth one opening. Now, there's an old saying, that if you're in the middle of a cheese factory and you think you smell a rat, you're probably right. So, now, the rumors are out there, so let's get to work and do some research. I mean, they gotta be, you know, you, you seen, some of the things that are on the internet were very disgusting, and if they're doing that publicly on the internet, that means they're intended to do more than watch football games at night or in the daytime. And if there's vending food, we need to have the county in there, that's their baby, they need to have a food license if they're, if they're selling it. Same thing with alcohol. They may not be a, a legal club, but if they are vending it illegally, that we need to find out. So, I do hope, and this is why I would suggest to the administration, please keep council liaison informed, the liaison to the police department. You don't have to tell us the exact details. I know some of them things are, you know, they don't want them leaked out there, but at least tell them and, and give people a little hope that something is being done. And just so you know, I've worked on the state level, and I've talked to some people at the legislature and otherwise to see if we can solve that problem through the Commonwealth. They usually do a pretty good job in the past, so I haven't forgotten you. Getting back to Fred, the sign and sidewalk issue. I, I don't know what it is with Erie, but every time I travel to another city, it seems like they handle closures a lot better than we do. Now, the one that looked pretty good was the one on Peach Street, where they gave you adequate notice, the one that's there now, where you make the S-curve. But usually, in Erie, you wind up coming up to a corner, turning a corner, and there's a construction project. Just like Erie Insurance, they have not, there's no way known if you come off Parade Street, and when you come up Seventh Street, I believe it is, that that's closed way ahead. It would be nice, like they do in other towns, to notify people that a major artery that people use, even though it's not a major artery like Sixth or Twelfth Street, a lot of people use Seventh Street to come into the downtown area. It would be nice. It would also be nice, when you block sidewalks, I noticed in other cities, even the major ones, they make, they make accommodations so that things won't fall on those people, there's a pathway, there, there's something is there so that people know where they can walk. That's not a lot to ask. And that kind of piggybacks what Curtis and I have been fighting about. We hand out easements, and right now, we, we don't get a dime, not even for the administrative side of it. And as I drive around town, I'm seeing a preponderance of dumpsters that are out there for days, blocking sightlines. There's no, can I finish, Mr. President? There's no, I mean, there's no way you can, you can see around them, there's no rules to determine where they should be placed, and people that are doing these casual businesses are doing the same thing. So, I think we need to sit down, and we need to do some serious research, and, you know, when, when we're talking about blocking sidewalks and everything, that's to be taken care of. And finally, and this is, I think that we should find a way to thank those people, like today, the, that gave us the fifteen thousand dollars, the Mercy Terrace. We need to thank them somehow publicly, either in the lobby or something, and encourage people to participate in such a way that it helps us out. Thank you.
Mr. President, not, I don't want to cut into Curtis this time, but I just, as you were talking about those street closures, I just Googled something like House Cities Notify of Street Closings, and Charlotte popped up, and you can sign up to get text notifications of street closings, and I know a lot of times you say, well, you know, I, I think the city website actually does a pretty good job of letting you know about-
Why, I'm against social media, not, not the, you know, not legitimate websites.
No, no, but, but text notifications, I work at the library now, I think just about everybody has a cellphone, so I don't know how that would help with the people who are visually impaired, but just one thought, it just was cool to see that you could get text notification that a street is going to be closed, so, sorry, Curtis, I just had to cheer up before I forgot it.
Curtis, you have two minutes left.
Well, he had a big thing earlier, so he's done.
Very quickly. Again, thank you, Mr. Witherspoon, and for all you've done, and hopefully, I was able to capture, you know, verbally some of the ways that we feel about you. Mr. President and I were kind of, we were wrestling, arm wrestling over who was going to present that to you and who was going to be the originator of the idea. So, I say we do an Ebony and Ivory, and we both did it, I just spoke it. And so, you, it wasn't just me, it was a lot of other people who felt that.
I had nothing to do with it. I was against it the whole.
I agree with, with Councilman Kwiatowski about the Mercy, Mercy Terrace Apartments and their financial contribution. I think we need to find ways to highlight those situations and those scenarios, because, I mean, we're talking, you know, the Mercy Terrace Apartments. It is, is contributing fifteen thousand dollars, that's significant. Imagine if there was, and we could go down the list, I, I have a list up from the treasures office that I had an intern working on, there's over eight million dollars worth of, at least eight million dollars worth of nonprofits out there, as far as, excuse me, tax dollars in connection to nonprofit organizations that don't pay tax, right? And so, if there's a way of, if you get a fifteen here and a ten there, and whatever upon their, based upon their size, they can do, I think we need to model those that are doing it. When, in relation to the childcare facilities, I don't know if this is a thing, but something I thought about, and maybe it's not what we do, but maybe we can promote and put in the, in the ear, if it's not already there, of those that are willing to do it, childcare provided, almost having like in the landlord association or apartment association, like a childcare or a childcare center association group, so like, information can be funneled through a means that's, that's organized and structured, so that, you know, because sometimes you have those peripheral mom and pop respectfully, you know, in their home, may not get it, information, they may not be on the newsletter of the Childcare Association of Pennsylvania, but if you're in Erie and you're a part of, and you're providing childcare in that way, it might be interesting to look into the possibility of that. The club energy issue is a continual issue, and, and, you know, sometimes it's hard, because you, and you're living in the midst of it, you can't see that some of the things that are happening, and, and, and it's hard to see the forest for the trees and all of that, so I have no disrespect or insensitivity to, to those residents there. And I, it's hard to even say that, because that family lives right in that neighborhood too, so you know, it's not like, you know, but I did talk to one of the owners personally, because I, I've known him since he was a kid, and to be honest, it's bad for business, what happens outside their business. And so, they definitely want to be a part of the solution. I mean, I, I know they've met with the administration and the police chief and, and folks before. I get, I had, I had a quick question, and I don't know if it's already been asked and answered previously in these discussions, but are there no loitering signs outside the facility? Excuse me, let me ask, I know there aren't. Are they able to be posted by the business owner that the police could enforce? Because that was one of the things that he and I talked about, was, like, there's, there's no, what are the mechanisms that can trigger the police to do something beyond, say, hey, get out of here, but if they're in a public space and there's no, no, if they're not violating something, you know, maybe they don't have room to, to move on that. So, you don't have to answer that now, because my time is running, but, and I'm already behind, but I appreciate your thought about that. What else, what else, what else, what else? Congratulations to all those who ran for office and did win, and congra-, were elected, but also congratulations to those who won and maybe weren't elected, because my first election, I didn't win, but it opened me and exposed me to, to, to the greatness of serving as an elected and meeting people, and so, it's a win-win. And many of us know, be careful when you campaign, you just might get elected, and that's kind of a, a lot of work, more than what you think as a candidate, to be an elected official. So, thank you for all those that are willing to serve in that capacity and the work that was put forth by those who did get enough votes to take a seat and those who didn't. It's both very valuable. Jefferson Society was there for Dr. Camille Boussette, I don't mean to disrespect her last name if I mispronounced it, but it was a great conversation about space. I just really liked the way she verbed, verbalized that. It, don't have really time to get into it, but I, I really think there's some expanded thought around that, how we are dealing with spatial integration or inclusion. I know integration's a scary word, but inclusion, you know what I mean? The spa-, we're controlling spaces, and we have a way of saying yes and no to certain people in certain spaces, and I thought that was powerful. Finally, the emotional well-being of our community is really important, right? And so, we can't become desensitized to violence, we can't become, become desensitized to poverty, we cannot become desensitized to all the social ills and struggles of our community. And so, I bring up the issue of the neighborhood crime reduction on purpose, because in understanding that there has to be research, I believe in data and all of those things for, you know, approved practices and best practices, but I would tell you to the heart of it, the causes of crime are hurt, hunger, and homeless, and hopelessness. Hurt, hunger, and hopelessness. There's a passage in the Bible where David said, "If I get too hungry, I'll steal." This is a person that we all can relate to, you know what I mean? People do things out of desperation and a lack of clarity because of desperation, and that may not be food hunger, it may be hunger for opportunity or perceived opportunity. So, I think, you know, in closing, those are the causes of crime. Now, they'll tell us that in data and, and stats and with the fee that comes along with the report, but those are the basic things, and so, I think if we have that heart at all we do, I think it's important that we do that, so that we can have the change that we want to see. So, thank you, Mr. President, for the extra time as well.
You, Mr. Jones. Only thing I have, I want to say congrats to Mr. Witherspoon on his victory last night. Definitely look forward to working with him a few more years. Kaz in a nail biter, he's, I want to say congratulation to him, as he's going to be our next city treasurer. Although he may be across the hall from us, I have a feeling he's going to definitely stay involved with what we're doing on this council, and we look forward to that also. Congratulate Mr. Keys and Mr. Brzinski on their nomination to council. Welcome them to join us in our budget sessions to see what it's about. I mean, they can, they won't be able to participate as much, but they can be there to learn, take notes, see what, how we do it- notes, see what, how we do it every year and how tough it gets every year and year after. But congratulations to those gentlemen, look forward to working with them also. Actually, I do appreciate the administration getting our budget to us two weeks earlier this year. They knew it was going to be a tough budget year, as once again, every year tends to be, but getting it a little earlier helps us as a council to digest it more, to see what we can do and do our due diligence with the budget and what's the best for the city of Erie. That's all I have this morning. Ms. Controller.
I have no report.
Mr. Betts, since you're in the hot seat over there.
I have no report.
Next to Ms. Controller.
I have no report.
Ms. Lamis.
I'll try to be quick. I know we're way behind schedule here. I want to start off on club energy. Lieutenant Bill Marucci is taking the lead on that, and I've been texting him back and forth and relaying your concerns. He wants you to give him a call. His number is 870-1147. That's 870-1147, and he'll work with you directly. He has been in contact with the owners. He's made them very aware of what they can and can't be doing, and they want to keep, they want to make sure that you're communicating with him direct, with Lieutenant Marucci directly, so that wires aren't getting crossed and just go directly to him, okay? Also, texting back and forth with Chris Groner here, so there is no compensation for facilitating the RACBs, but we are aggressively seeking all funding opportunities that we can because it benefits the city. So it just, everybody works a little bit of overtime and doesn't get paid for it because we're salaried, but it's important for the community for the long term, so we're continuing, yeah, we're going to continue to do that. And on the $136,932 appropriation for the CBCR program, that is the cost allocation for implementing the first year of the grant, and fiscal will attach memos in the future. They did not have a memo attached to that, so they will have those going forward. On the budget, I will say, we really did make a concerted effort to get that to you a couple of weeks earlier this year. As President Winarski said, we, we realize this is going to be difficult. Even though we've submitted it, we haven't stopped working and looking for other things that we can do, so we do look forward to our budget sessions and seeing what else we can figure out between now and when you have your final vote. Also, just quickly, I'll mention tomorrow's press conference, the weekly press conference at 10:00 a.m., will be focusing on international issues related to a couple of our sister cities in Ireland and also Zibo China, and then also a proclamation for Model UN, which will be going on at Gannon this weekend. Since last council meeting, we attended Fall for Arts and Cultures, the annual event, and we were speaking about inclusion earlier. It was a very inclusive event. They had dance, music, and art from, you know, various cultures, and it was, it was a really refreshing evening. We've also continued to meet with the People's Supper to work on implementation of the projects that were identified. We had a meeting with the entire group of about 75 people on October 24th to plan next steps and begin implementation. Also, last Friday, I think it was, was the City Mission Awards banquet. It was an inspiring evening in which they recognized three, three people who had struggled with addiction and are, you know, recovering and living very productive lives, and they were an inspiration to everybody who attended that event. Last two things, the JES, Jefferson Global Summit was mentioned. That continues. There are evening lectures through November 15th, so a lot of really exciting speakers coming up. If anybody's interested, they can see those directly on the Jeffersons' website. And then finally, just want to draw people's attention to the two recent murals that were completed. The one at 18th and Parade on the side of Roggs is a beautiful representation of the community and of the inclusive nature of the, all the cultures that we have here, and it's, it's really heartwarming. And then on the side of the Cascade Club, another beautiful mural representing Erie's history. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President.
I think that's about, yes, Mr. Witherspoon.
I just wanted to let you know that as of November 1st, I'm no longer with the State Auditor General's office. I have retired as of that date, and I only say that, I've been holding it for maybe five or six years or more, that we had a couple of citizens that called the state office complaining about me serving city council during the time I should be doing state work. And one of the citizens requested that, my boss, which is the HR director, he came up under the Jack Wagner's prior to Deepa Squali, and he talked to him, and he continued to call, but what he didn't know, that every time I'm at council during the day, I take vacation time, and on vacation time, you can do what you want to do. So to, this message is out to those two citizens who have attempted to cause me headaches. I didn't have to use any aspirin because I didn't have any headaches, and my bosses were very satisfied with what we're doing, how we do it, and it just shows you, if you follow the rules, you don't get in trouble. So to those citizens, and they know who they are, I thank you, and I'm retired, so don't call me about auditing. Period.
Is that?
Can I, can I just say one more thing? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just have to let you know that I emailed Frank to talk about the text messaging thing. He's already sent a message to Brian in IT, just so you know that there is responsiveness in the city, kind of following up. I'm sorry, I just want to let you know. That's great responsiveness. I sent it, and two minutes later, he was following up, so.
Okay, try this again.
Yeah.
City Council adjourns at 11:19. Mr. Winarski, Mrs. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mrs. Patajk, Mrs. Shaw.